March 4, 2014 to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Ken Davis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hines, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today, the consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the special meeting of February 14, 2014. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 18, 2014. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $214,909.79. Approval of the permit to occupy the right-of-way for the Black Hills Back 40 Mountain Bike Race as submitted by the Highway Department. And finally, approval of the remaining lien balance release for applicant C.E. as discussed at the February 18 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve items five through nine and the consent agenda as presented.
We have a second? Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 10, Pennington County Board of Mental Illness Appointment. Is Mr. Barnier here?
Good morning, folks. I believe you have a letter in your packet. That's my understanding that Holly was going to be including it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to respond. As some of you will know, the term is for a period of three years, and this is an ongoing function of the county that the board members help fulfill. Any questions?
Any questions by the commission?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? For the record, the appointment recommended is Ms. Robin Page. Is she here? Or...
I did not ask her to attend. I wasn't sure that the commission would want...
Thank you. What's the wish of the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make that motion to approve the appointment of Robin Page as recommended by Greg Barnier and to the mental health board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Been a while. Next item is the presentation of the Adopt a Highway Program Certificates of Appreciation.
Good morning. Hines Junging-Pink County Highway Superintendent, and I have Connie Murlato with me this morning to give the certificates out. We do this every year for organizations that volunteer to pick up trash and things out of our county right-of-ways. We had a total of 46 organizations who participated last year, and they cleaned up trash along 101.12 miles of our county road, and we really appreciate it. And with that, I'll let Connie call up the names and present the awards.
Thank you.
Good morning. The first group this morning is the 28th AMXS. I don't have anyone here. The 28th Security Forces Squadron, Alpha Flight.
Would you introduce the recipients? Or would you... Sir?
Oh, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you.
The next group is the Rushmore Hockey Association.
Jeff Partridge, Rushmore Hockey, treasurer.
Good job.
The next group is the Silver City Fire Department. Western Dakota Insurers. And WL Plastics.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Branch Malden with WL Plastics. I'm safety coordinator.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie. Ready?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Connie, we've got this list with a whole bunch of more names on it.
Yep, we do. You want to read through that?
Are they... They're just not here to receive an award?
Yes, I asked them if they would like to present.
I think it'd be... I think it'd be great for the public to know how many people... I mean, I'm impressed with how many people you got on here. Would you mind just reading the names off? I mean, you don't have to say where they're picking it up, but...
Silver City, too.
Silver City, yep. I just think it'd be good that people know how many people are volunteering and putting their time out doing this.
We do have a lot of groups. That is true. And a lot of them just can't be here this morning, so... I see Silver City's Fire Department's here, so I'm going to have them come up if they'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Good to see you. Thank you. Appreciate it. If they want to put out your name and...
My name is Todd Tobin. I'm with the Silver City Volunteer Fire Department, currently in the capacity of Assistant Chief. I served as our board president for 14 years and finally rotated off, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this honor.
Okay, I can read through these organizations. There's 46 of them. The 28th AMXS, the 28th CPTS, 28 MXS of Ellsworth Air Force Base, 28th Logistics Readiness Squadron, 28th Security Forces Squadron, the 28th Security Forces Squadron, Alpha Flight, American Institute of Chemical Engineers, Black Hills Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors, Black Hills Area Geocachers, Black Hills Works ITS, Boys Club of Rapid City, Camp Columbus Area Residents, Children's Home Society, or the Black Hills Children's Home, Cosmopolitan Club, Cub Scout PAC 74, Dakota Territory Cruisers, the Ellsworth Air Force Base Active Airmen's Council, Ellsworth Air Force Base Group 56, or I believe they say Group 56, Exchange Club of Rapid City, Friends of Clegg Horn Canyon, Harley Owners Group, Hart Ranch Resort, Horse Creek LLC, the Cave RS Lodge, Lightning Ridge Rottweilers, Materials Advantage, which is a South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Metallurgical Engineering Department, National American University Online Campus, Norris Peak Subdivision, Pennington Title Company, Phieta Sigma, South Dakota School of Mines and Technology, Rapid Valley United Methodist Church, the Reader Ranch, Rick Whip and Chris Jones Families, Rushmore Hockey Association who's here today, South Dakota 61st AFJ ROTC, South Dakota Christian Home Educators, the South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Student Members of the American Chemical Society, South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Weather Association, South Dakota School of Mines and Technology American Indian Science and Engineering Society, Silver City Fire Department, the Irish, True North Steel, Vern Zibart, Western Dakota Insurers, WL Plastics, and I'm not sure how to pronounce this one. Is it Ai?
Kai.
Kai, I'm sorry. Kai Alpha. Is it Chi? Or Chi? I'm murdering it, I'm sorry. Better Row or High Country Ranch.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
I just want to let you know that Connie takes care of all this and contacts the people and works with them throughout the year, and we really appreciate it. And if anybody's interested, we do have three sections of road that are still available, and it's 143rd Avenue, 161st Avenue, and West Nike Road, so if there's any other organization out there, we do have a few areas that we could still use volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
How often do they go out and pick up trash?
Typically, two to three times a year. And they let us know, and then we go out and pick up the trash, and the landfill lets us take it to the landfill free of charge, being it's cleaning up the right-of-ways. So we appreciate the city of Rapid City, too.
Thank you.
Next item is the Rapid City Public Library Liaison Report. Dr. Cole, and I believe you have an introduction to me.
Yes, good morning. Here, Cole, the county liaison to the public library. And I have two gentlemen with me today, Mr. Rod Pettigrew, who is the chair of the library board, as well as I would like to introduce the new director of the library, Mr. Jim McShane. So if they could both come up, please.
Nice to be here. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. And if you have any questions, I may be able to answer them, since I've only been here for two months, but I'll do my best.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to keep you folks in the loop. We're in the process of reviewing our security options at the library. As you are aware, last year, we introduced security basically on a temporary basis. It's been received by the public in a very positive manner. We get a lot of feedback, and we're finding that the public likes seeing security down there. Not only are they providing security, but recently, we had some medical issues, and those people are trained in medical issues as well, and they were able to assist some patrons that needed some medical help. So over the next 90 days, the library will be reviewing all of our options and deciding to keep security, and if we go that way, then how to go about securing that service. I believe, my personal opinion would be, I believe we should keep that security down there and just put the public's mind at rest that we're serious about this library. We want our families to feel safe when they come down there. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
Welcome to the community.
Dr. Cole, do you wish to proceed?
Yes, thank you. You have the reports before you there, and as you can see, the trends are really the same as they have been for the last couple of years. The digital usage from patrons continues to increase. I think of note, the percentage of county users has remained, you know, approximately the same, just a little over 16% of the total users of the library. And that's based on the number of cardholders and the number of uses of their card in the library. So does anybody have any questions? I guess we've changed the format a little bit of what the library presents to you. Is there any other data that you would like me to ask for, or anything that you think is missing, or a different way to provide it?
Mr. Chair, it's not really so much anything to do with this data, except that I am curious, how often are the records purged? Are they...
I believe they're purged annually.
Okay.
It used to be... The library cards used to be purged on a monthly basis because everybody renewed at a different time, and I think over the past two years, the library shifted to an annual renewal, and so they're purged at that time.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, do these numbers represent the satellite libraries as well as the main library?
I don't believe so. I think this is all... Or you mean the satellite in terms of Western Dakota Tech and Beetle? Yeah.
They include those?
Yes.
And I assume, then, the western, southern, and northern is just geographic of Rapid City?
Of Pennington County.
Oh, of Pennington County. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess my question is, the eastern census blocks, 6%, how... Since we've started going out to Western Dakota, has that changed any? I thought it would be a greater number than that, I guess, but...
You know, I don't know the specific numbers just for Western Dakota Tech, how that has changed over time. I think it was slow to start. People just weren't aware of the library, and there have been several events, like open houses and things of that sort, that are trying to sort of increase the awareness of that branch.
And I guess with the percentage, it doesn't indicate the number of users. That may be an increase. The percentage maybe isn't because the rest of them are increasing. Do I... Anyway, I thought it may be more than that.
Yeah, I think it's... That's sometimes hard to figure out. And I think, too, the library staff, along with Mr. McShane, would like to invite all of you anytime you would like to come to any of the branches and get a tour and see how things are done and see what services the library offers. Any more questions?
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Okay, the next item is lien release request. Who's here to deal with that?
Just to inform the board, we tried calling the applicant three times, and I wasn't able to connect with him. So at this point, I don't know if he's in attendance or not.
Was he informed that this is going to be on the agenda today?
That's what we tried to call him and tell him.
Okay. So does someone wish to make a motion to lay this aside, or no?
If we went to another meeting, do you think he could be here? Do you think...
To be fair, yes. We can try and make contact.
Mr. Chair, in the interest of being fair, I would like to continue this to our next meeting, and hopefully, we'll be able to get a hold of him.
That's a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Commissioner Davis. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't vote against that. He says, "After 17 years, I received this notice." Well, to me, it says it was a public defender in 2008, and I'm pretty sure you remember that. He made some payments even then. I think for $120, I think he'd pay it.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the next item is from equalization.
Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. You have three abatement applications before you. Two of them come from my office and one from the property owner. I'd like to ask, is Ms. Selgeskog here? I've never met her, but that one comes from the property owner. I'll explain what they all are, and you can probably act on them on one. The first one is Go Ring, I think is how you say it. This is a mobile home. The owner died several years ago, and the mobile home was destroyed. The sheriff's office attempted to collect taxes on it, and it's difficult when the owner's dead. And evidently, the home wasn't worth very much. So the home is gone. The owner's dead. The second one is John Witherspoon College. This is a college that bought a church property. They're a religious school. They bought a church. The church was being used as a church by a... Some church, and was tax exempt. But when the college buys it, it becomes taxable for the remainder of the year that the church didn't own it and use it. It's added to the tax roll as... Through the omitted property process. It's not really property omitted from the tax roll, but it was exempt. So when the college buys it, it's added. The college gets a letter that says, "We are adding this property to the tax roll at this much value. You have 15 days to respond. Come to the auditor's office if they think something is wrong." It's sort of own personal assessment notice in the appeal process when we add omitted property like this. However, when we added this, I did the math wrong, and I gave the auditor the wrong value to add. What is being added here is the value of the property for that portion of the year that the college owned it. And the abatement here adjusts the mistake in my math. Now, the college will apply for exemption for next year, so this is likely the only tax bill they'll have, but they do have a tax bill for a part of the year. The third one is...
Before you move to the third one, can I ask a question?
Yes.
The... So the difference... You had put it in for the full year. Is that what it looks like? And it should have only been for 10 months?
Yeah. I don't think so, but I don't remember what my error was.
Okay, so the total... Right now, the total valuation is $240,667, and you're looking to abate $24,727 of that? That's not the tax. That's just the tax. That's just the assessed value.
Abatements are always value, so that's taxable value that's being abated. The tax is a few hundred dollars.
$200 on...
A few hundred dollars. I don't remember how much.
Okay, thanks.
The abatement always does value.
All right.
Okay. Then the third one. Ms. Selgeskog purchased a house, applied for an owner-occupied classification. She made that application timely. That was in 2001. The property was replatted for 2012. Changed the legal description, changed the parcel ID. The statute says that through the replating process, the owner-occupied classification should carry over. You should not lose an owner-occupied classification because you replatted your property. And that makes sense, except practical application of that is extremely difficult because in 2012, we have a new parcel number and a new legal description, and we have no idea that it replatted and actually existed in another identity the year before. So we try and find those, and we mail out letters to those and other owner-occupied issues. The property owner here didn't respond to the letter we sent in 2012, 2013. Then, when the assessment notice... Or somehow, here, for 2014, she noticed that it wasn't owner-occupied, came in with another application. So it is owner-occupied for 2014, but she picked up on the fact that it wasn't before. Now, she, the property owner, completed an abatement application for this, for the difference due to owner-occupied. The math is correct. She worked with somebody in the office, so that abatement is the difference for what it would have been if it were owner-occupied. Now, I originally had a recommendation when this went to the city to deny because the property owner didn't respond to the letters we sent and the assessment notices. Talking to Jay, I'll change that recommendation, and I'd say grant it because the statute does say that through a replating process, the owner-occupied should transfer over. Of course, the decision on all of these abatements are the commission's.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. We did discuss this, and this is another one of those...
You are...
Oh, I'm Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. I apologize. This is another one of those situations where a good law needs a little bit more language in it to make it practical. In other words, it makes sense what this law is trying to do. If you don't change your status, you just changed a legal description because you replatted, maybe you changed a lot line configuration, but you're still living there. Nothing else has changed, literally, on the ground. You should continue to maintain your owner-occupied, but practically, at the county level, there's no way for the equalization office to easily catch that and know that that's what happened. So clearly, the spirit of the law is this individual should maintain their owner-occupied, but there ought to be some additional, maybe, obligation on the homeowner to notify. In other pieces of this statute, if you transfer your property to a new owner, there's clear direction, they have to come in and file a new certification or something like that.
Application.
Application for the owner-occupied. So it puts some onus or obligation on the homeowner to notify. In the circumstance that Shannon's dealing with, the statute clearly is silent on that. It does not require that, but practically speaking, it really puts the county in a difficult position because it's always after the fact trying to clean it up. So I support the abatement because I think the law clearly provides for that, but this is always going to be an issue for equalization until something is added to that statute to help the county out.
Well, for next year.
So that's the story behind all of them. In summary, again, recommend approval on all three abatements.
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve all three abatements.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
The only other comment I would make is, between you and Mr. Alderman, you should put a tickler file in for next year's legislation to clean that out. I mean, that's a perfect statute that needs to be straightened up so that we don't have this problem in the future.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Shannon. Next item is items from extension. Memorandum of Understanding.
What you have in front of you is the current version of the MOU between SDSU Extension and Pennington County. You've got two sections that are in yellow, which are the additions that I made, which reflect last year's obligations for responsibility on payments. And then, I added a 90-day termination notice in there because the contract was very open-ended and just felt that with either party being able to terminate without notice wasn't proper. So if you have any questions, we will certainly stand to answer those.
Any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to, um, approve the chair's signature on this memorandum of understanding with the South Dakota Extension Service.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Now, you have an introduction. Introduce yourself first.
Tiffany Meyer, Pennington County Extension. And I'd like to introduce Craig Alberti. He is our Military Program Assistant, so he'll be specifically doing 4H up on base and around Doug, or Douglas School System. So, Craig, come on up.
Hi, I was just, uh, just hired to take over that program. I grew up in an active 4H family, and it had a really positive influence on my development, and I'm looking forward to working with, uh, kids and programs out at Ellsworth to give them some of the same kinds of experiences that I had.
So, Craig, where are you originally from?
Sioux Falls.
Sioux Falls. Good old South Dakota guy. Oh, welcome.
Are you related in any way, or, to Curtis?
Uh, yeah, it's my dad.
That's what I thought. I knew him well.
Well, thank you.
We look forward to you and Tiffany doing a good job for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is item 16, the Healthcare Trust Board.
Yes, good morning, Heine Jungy. I am chairman of the Pennington County Healthcare Trust Board. And, uh, due to the fact that we switched from Wellmark and our, our flex, flexible benefits is an Ollin Wage Works, uh, we're asking for approval of the Board of Commissioners to authorize the changes in our flexible benefits plan and our summary plan, and to approve and adopt a attached resolution to that effect.
So, one of the major changes is that rollover the 500, right?
Yes, the, uh, one of the major changes is, is that, uh, currently, uh, whatever you elected to put in your flexible benefit, benefit plan, at the end of the year, if you did not use it all, you lost it, and it reverted back to the county general fund. Uh, these was employees' money that they put in there. That this change and the change in, in federal law now allows, uh, an employee to carry over up to $500. If they don't use it in that current calendar year, they can carry it over into the next calendar year. So, that's one of the big changes in the flexible benefits.
Any other questions or comments? I believe the motion you're looking for includes approval of the chairman's signature-
Yes.
-on this document. Do we have a motion?
So, Mr. Chair, I would move to accept the, uh, new summary, or the new plan for the flexible benefits, and to authorize your signature on the agreement.
On the resolution.
A resolution, sorry.
Second.
We have a second, motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Well, you're up again, Heine.
Now, I'm back to being the highway superintendent.
Item 17.
Uh, this was continued from the last meeting. Uh, it's for the Senior Games, uh, Road Bicycle Race. Uh, that's going to happen on Lower Spring Creek. I asked Kristy Linds to, uh, be in attendance to address any of your questions, and I know the one question was, could they put advance warning signs up to, uh, let the people know that the race would be happening in two or three days? And she's here to, I believe she's here to address those questions, so.
Kristy Linds, Rapid City Parks and Recreation. Um, we not only are willing to put up sandwich boards at the entrance points of 79 and further down at the turnaround point, where it goes from, um, paved road path to gravel. We are also willing to do a certified mailing to all the homeowners, excuse me, to all the homeowners that live along our race route. Um, our committee did go door-to-door last year, um, that were going to significantly impact right at the race beginning and end, right off a dewy lane. We did go door-to-door to those homeowners, so they were well-informed, um, as well as we did prepare the area to the best of our ability to keep traffic flowing at that point.
I think, uh, one of the things that, um, came to my attention was perhaps people that you did, or beyond the gravel road that you perhaps did not go door-to-door with. And, um, I think some of them were, were afraid of, um, hitting someone with a stock trailer or a hay truck or that sort of thing. And, and that caused a concern. So, if you do signage at both ends, far enough in advance, they'll be able to plan their trips accordingly. And we appreciate that.
Absolutely. And we are talking a Friday morning. Race time starts at 8:00 AM. Uh, last year, we only had 35 participants, and we were done within two hours, and, and were cleared of the area.
Any other questions or comments?
Linda, just out of curiosity, how far ahead do you think those signs should be there?
I would think a couple of days, at least. But is that acceptable?
Sure, we can do three days. If that's, it's a Friday, we can put them out Tuesday.
Hey, do we have a motion?
So, you just need a motion to-
To, a motion to approve the permit to occupy right-of-way for the South Dakota Senior Games Bicycle Race and authorize-
That would be my motion. I'll, I'll-
Signature.
I'll just, that'll be my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, item B, Heine.
Uh, item B is award recommendation, award recommendation for our, uh, annual projects and supplies and materials. Uh, the first, uh, few, we need a separate motion on each one. And then, uh, when we get to the annual supplies, you could do all that in one motion. First one is AC 2014-1 Asphalt Concrete Overlay Project. Uh, this is a project on Radar Hill Road from Longview South to, uh, 44. And, uh, the low bidder on that project was J&amp;J Asphalt, uh, of Rapid City in the amount of $290,885.93, and that is our recommendation to award to them.
That would be my motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Next project, the AC 2014-2. It's an asphalt concrete overlay project. This is a mill and overlay from, uh, south side of the city of New Underwood, uh, south on 160th and 161st Street, all the way to Highway 44. And the low bidder on that project was Hills Materials Company of Rapid City in the amount of $984,938.98, and our recommendation is to award to Hills Materials.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Next item is AST 2014 Asphalt Surface Treatment. This is our chip seal project on various roads throughout the county. The low bidder was Batuminous Paving of Ortonville, Minnesota in the amount of $794,292, and that is our recommendation.
That's my motion, Mr. Chairman. We award that to Batuminous Paving.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Commissioner.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Heine, have you used this company in the past?
Yes, we have.
They've done business out here?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
They currently have a couple of projects for the state of South Dakota in this area, and I think that's why we got good numbers, good bid from them. Next is ASC 2014. This is asphalt surface crack sealing in various roads throughout, uh, Pennington County. And the low bidder was Highway, Highway Improvement Incorporated of Sioux Falls, South Dakota in the amount of $134,207. And we recommend, recommend award to Highway Improvement.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any, any discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
AGG 2014-1 is an aggregate stockpile. It's a Howie Pit. It is located, uh, east of New Underwood, and the low bidder was Western Construction Company of Rapid City, South Dakota in the amount of $120,400, and that is our recommendation.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
AGG 2014-2. This is an aggregate stockpile project in the Paulson Pit, which is located north and west of Wall, South Dakota. Uh, low bidder for that, uh, project was Western Construction Company, Rapid City, South Dakota in the amount of $139,050, and we recommend award to Western Construction Company.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
AGG 2014-3 is an aggregate stockpile project located just north of the city of New Underwood, and Western Construction Incorporated of Rapid City was low bidding amount of $102,000, and we recommend award to Western Construction.
My motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
An AGG 2014-4 Aggregate Stockpile Project, Copper Mountain Pit, uh, located west of Hill City. Uh, low bidder on that project was KD Contractors of Hot Springs, South Dakota in the amount of $122,200, and we recommend award to KD Contractors Incorporated. We also are entering into agreement with the Forest Service. They're going to, uh, crush some off our bid, uh, so that's going to be coming in the foreseeable future.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
As we've done in past years, the annual supplies can all be done on, uh, one motion. Uh, we've listed the low bidder, and our recommendations are to award, uh, all the annual supplies as listed. We have aggregate materials, uh, asphalt concrete, composite, asphalt maintenance materials, concrete products, corrugated metal pipe, cutback emulsified asphalt, deicing sand, fencing, guard rail, magnesium chloride, seeding and fertilizing, timber bridge materials, and traffic control materials. And if you have any questions on any of those, I'm more than happy to go through them in more detail.
On some of these, you're recommending two bidders awarded on the one contract?
Yes, on, especially the aggregate materials, because, uh, uh, one company may have the one item, and then there's other items that, uh, like Pete Leans and, and Tally Construction. Tally Construction Pit is, happens to be the Pearly Pit up, up, uh, by Bear Country. And then Western Construction has some material available, uh, out towards the airport. So, depending on location, it's, it's cheaper for us to have a shorter haul than to pick it up and haul it 10 miles further. So, we, we award it based on the location and where we need the material in that area. Uh, gives us the best, is more cost-effective than just giving it to one company and have, needing to haul it, uh, long distances.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the annual supply and be awarded to the contractors presented by the Highway Department. We have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes.
I'm a little confused. We're required to bid this stuff, is that right?
Yes.
And, and so, how do we, how do we award off of one bid to three bidders that are not? I mean, I, I guess they're the three lowest bidders, but they're sure not the low bid. Legally, how do we do that? I mean, I thought the statute said you'd take the low bid.
Well, we've done this in the past, and we've been audited, and we've always awarded low bid based on location. And then it depends where our needs are.
The haul, the haul factor in this is your trucks hauling?
Yes. Yeah, these are all picked up at their sites.
And the low responsible bidder, there's a definition of responsible.
But, but we're, you know, and some of these we're awarding to three different contractors, and the prices range anywhere from, uh, it looks like it's 675 to 860. So, we've got one bid. We received four bid, uh, bids on it, and we're awarding a contract to the three, apparently, the three lowest bids. I don't know if we advertised it that way, uh, or in our bid specs-
I had it in my specifications.
That, that you would base it upon calculating in the haul factor?
The location, yes. Because it cost us about, between a dollar 25 and a dollar 50 a ton per mile.
Well, I understand that, and I understand why you're trying to do it. I'm just wondering if we're legal in doing this this way. Well, I, I sure haven't ever bid, um, done a, a bid award like this in the past, or at least, I haven't done it when I was, uh, in a position to advertise for bids. And I, I know that the statute always said you award it to the lowest responsible bidder. Unless we, uh, you know, maybe what we should have been doing is, is specking this stuff out per location and had, had everybody be able to bid it based on, on providing it for that location. I, I don't know. I mean, it just doesn't look to me like it fits the statute as I recall reading the statutes.
Well, I guess I-
I understand, I understand why you're doing it, Heine, and I don't disagree with you.
And we've done it, I mean, the last 10 years this way, and, and have never had any trouble with the, with the state auditor when they come in and look at it. Because it's still, we still have the, the caveat in our, it's, we awarded in the best interest, interest of the county also, because we have that in our specifications.
I've never liked the way we do it, but we've done it. And Heine will be moving to Sioux Falls, uh, uh, when he retires here shortly, and just maybe, you know, it might be a different address he's going to, is the only thing.
He's supposed to have a visitation, right?
I don't know, I, I, I think, uh, we'll have Jay take a look at it and have, have a good opinion.
So, which item, you want to remove the, just the aggregate material item and award the rest of them? Because I think the rest of them are pretty cut and dry. Well, the asphalt maintenance materials, no, that was, that's the only one, was the aggregate material. materials.
I make a motion to accept, did you have a motion to accept them?
Yes, we do have a motion and a second, and if we.
I'll, I'll make a motion to amend that, to eliminate the aggregate throughout the county.
Materials, and have Jay review it.
Yeah.
Because we got 30 days, so we still would have time to do it at the next meeting.
That's just amending it to remove that one.
Did we get a second to the amendment?
Second.
Motion and a second to amend the motion. So we're voting on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, now, now the motion. As amended. Do we have a motion? Can your, your motion is up now?
I was waiting for someone to make a substitute motion, but.
Yeah, we don't need a substitute motion, amended it to drop that one out.
Okay. So that's already passed?
We vote on the amended motion, though. We just voted to amend it, as I understand it. So, all in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Okay. Next item I have is award recommendation for a used elevating scraper. We advertised for bids, we only received one bid, and that was from Butler Machinery Company of Rapid City for a 2007 Cat 615 C2 with 2,139 hours in amount of $296,110. We got all the oil samples and inspection report on it. It meets all of our requirements, and a new scraper, if we wanted to go out and buy a new one, would be $780,000. So, this is our best alternative, and, and we would recommend awarding the bid to Butler Machinery Company in amount of $296,110. Yeah, because our John Deere, we can no longer get parts for it, it's over 20 years old, the last few parts we have been able to obtain was from a junkyard or a salvage yard, so it's to the point where, when it breaks, it's done for, it's scrap.
Do we have a motion? So move, Mr. Chair. The purchase I'd recommended.
One second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chair, and Heine, I'm wondering, you're saying the John Deere, you can't get parts and things, maybe we should get rid of it now while the getting's good?
Well, once we get this one on board, yeah, we could sell at an auction.
Surplus it.
We'll surplus it, and sell it at an auction, and I, I don't know where we're at as far as a overall auction, I know with moving into the new building and stuff, you're probably gonna have a lot of items, and I don't have too many out there at this time, so whenever we, the commissioners make a determination, have an auction, then we could get all this stuff surplused and put on there. Next item I have is a skid steer loader, a new skid steer loader. We received four bids, and the low bid was General Equipment Company, Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of $42,076, and we would recommend award to General Equipment Company.
That'd be my motion, Mr. Chair. You have a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And just to let you know, we did ask for bids for a used knuckle boom truck to replace a 1980 Mack in the Hill City area, nobody could find one, we were asking for a 2007 or newer, and, and we received no bids on that, so probably later on this year, we'll be back trying to do another advertisement, and maybe have to go with the older one, older than 2007, because they said there was some O5s out there, and I was hoping to stay at least a 2007 with less than 200,000 miles, but we may have to find something used a little more than that, I guess, so that'll be coming back up in a later date. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
According to our agenda, our next item from planning and zoning is at 10:30. Do we have a motion?
Move to go into executive session for personnel and contractual.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Executive session.
Second. Motion and a second to come out of the executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We're back to planning and zoning. And looks like we need another motion.
Make a motion to go into a board of adjustment.
Motion and a second to convene as a board of adjustment, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Dan.
Good morning, Dan Jensen, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request for Sean and Jody Burke, this is to reduce the minimum required lot size from 40 acres to 8.51 acres, eight acres in a general ag district. Property is located at 15872 East Highway 44, located in Farmingdale, approximately 15 miles east of Rapid City. The purpose of this variance is to allow for the lot reconfiguration by combining portions of two existing parcels and vacating an existing alleyway, and a number of other smaller lots within the platted areas of Farmingdale. The property currently contains a single-family residence, small shed, and onsite wastewater treatment system. Moving the shared lot lines, he's basically redoing this so you can get better financing and finance the property for that reason, is the main reason for this variance request. He's technically actually reducing density by 19 lots, he's taking a lot of these smaller lots and getting rid of them, alleyway, vacating those, and reducing density by 19 lots. Property is currently zoned general ag, as is the whole surrounding area, even all these smaller lots are still zoned general ag, they've been zoned that way since zoning happened in Pennington County. They're all legal non-conforming, actually by reducing, he's actually creating larger lots, getting rid of all those smaller ones. And staff would, you know, he either had a choice of rezoning to low-density residential district, or getting this lot size variance. Staff felt the lot size variance was the better option, and we'd recommend that this is the way it goes, as there's no other zoning in the area, that would, this would basically be creating a spot zoning in this area. With that, we didn't have, if you recommend approval, we didn't see the need to attach any conditions with this variance request.
Any questions?
Dan, is this ever going to be a problem because it's going to be a smaller acreage than for taxation purposes?
As far as ag exemption or just taxing, you know, I believe they, it was, all these smaller lots were actually one parcel already as far as filed.
Those already subdivided as.
Yes, but he's actually making a much larger lot.
Current law doesn't allow for that many, so I'm just.
I'm sorry?
Current law doesn't allow for all those different lots within a subdivision.
No, we, if, the community of Farmingdale would not happen today as it's platted, as it is right now, we would require much more improvements, of course, there's no need, there's very few property owners in there, the properties out there right now are owned by mainly three or four people, and that's it.
Mr. Chair. Yes. I'd make a motion to approve variance 14-03 for Sean and Jody Burke as presented. There a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? I guess I would ask the question, are all the setbacks being met?
Yes.
That's good.
Yes, it is.
Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item B is a variance request 1404 for Dan and Stephanie Hunter, this is to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from 25 feet to 17.5 feet in a limited ag zoning district. The property is located at 23225 South Prairie Creek Road, approximately two miles south of Paxton Lake, near Black Forest End. Currently, the property is 5.44 acres, zone limited ag district. The purpose of this is to bring the current house into compliance. Property currently consists of a single-family residence, well, onsite wastewater disposal system, and a detached garage. He recently applied for a building permit for a 12 by 16 shed, which is how we discovered the house was too close to the property line. He originally got a building, or the previous two owners had gotten a building permit back in 1998. The site plan that was submitted with this building permit showed it to be 150 feet from the property line. There is no inspection program or even compliance officer, so it's never discovered, and he had actually gotten an additional building permit since the house was built, however, they used the same site plan at that time as they originally had done, and a building permit was issued. And since this time, he had, when we brought it up this time for the 12 by 16 shed, it was discovered, and it certainly looked like the house was a lot closer than 150 feet from the property line, so we got a survey, the applicant provided a survey, and it showed it to be only 17 feet from the property line, thus a violation of our zoning ordinance, so the property is currently in violation. To bring it into compliance, he has to get this variance or acquire additional land from the adjoining property owner, which I believe is Forest Service, correct? Yeah. So, with that, that's really his only option, he did appear before you, he did have, was required to pay penalty fees, those were waived at the February 4th county board meeting. If county board grants this variance request 1404, staff would recommend that one condition be added.
What you wish.
Dan, the, the, the land that, that the house is sitting too close to, is that, you see, that's Forest Service?
Actually, I stand corrected, it is a private piece of property, the nearest house to that property line is some 250 feet away, and right here, you can see a picture of it, that stake you can see in the front is the property line, the house you can see up on the hill is some 250 feet away from that property line.
And have, have those people been notified of this variance request?
Yes, they have.
Mr. Chair, Dan, is there any chance that some of this land has been platted off of this particular piece to make that house sitting closer to the property line?
No, the property line has not been changed since they initially got, well, I don't believe it's ever been changed since the property has been platted, I'm not even sure when the property was platted, probably in the 60s or 70s. The lot is a legal non-conforming lot, it currently doesn't even meet our lot size requirement in a limited ag zoning district, however, it is a legal non-conforming as it was created prior to 1994. He still has to meet the required setbacks in that zoning district, which is 25 feet from all property lines with all structures.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve variance VA 14-04 with one condition, as presented by staff of planning and zoning.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of, oh, excuse me.
I'll vote for this, some guy would like him to make, make us, make him move the house, and make him go back and sue the guy that lied to us twice.
Can't you disagree with that one? You want to put that in, on the agenda for the next meeting?
I'd like to.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item C is a variance request 1405, this is for Adam and Stephanie Newman, Brad Jensen as the agent, this is to reduce the minimum required easement width from 66 feet to 30 feet for an access easement, providing access to two lots. This is located one half mile south of Sheridan Lake Road, one tenth of a mile south of Miracle Road, and involves 20 acres to 10 acre parcels. The access easement was created in 2007 to provide access to these properties, the properties are currently zoned suburban residential district. Section 313(c)(1) requires that this easement providing access be in accordance with the width requirements of our subdivision regulations, Table 1, which says it's supposed to be 66 feet in order for us to recognize it as legal access for purposes of issuing a building permit. It is currently only a 30-foot wide easement, which was created only in 2007. The driving surface of this road is a 10 to 14-foot wide gravelled driving surface that is allowed with our current ordinance, now if they were improving it, and being it's located in a suburban residential district, it would be required to be a 50-foot wide easement because it would be platted through the city of Rapid City, as it is located within their three-mile plating jurisdiction, and that would also require curb gutters, sidewalks, because it is in a suburban residential district. However, he is not plating at this time, he's just trying to obtain it to be a legal access for purposes of issuing a building permit. The two lots are equivalent to size allowed in a limited ag zoning district, limited ag zoning district would require these lots to be 10 acres. If this easement were to provide access in a limited ag zoning district, he'd actually get by with a 40-foot wide easement. However, it's still an SRD, it does require it to be a 66-foot wide easement. If you recommend approval or approve this, we didn't foresee any need for any conditions to be added.
So this, this road, I guess I'm, the 30-foot wide easement, really only goes into the first lot?
Yes, it stops right here, Mr. Newman currently owns both of these lots, and he wouldn't need an easement to go to this half until he were to sell that property. Once he goes to sell it, he would have to create a 66-foot wide easement from here to this lot.
Unless we granted him a variance?
Yes.
So, so what's, why, why?
Why are we doing this?
Why are we doing the variance now, why don't we just say follow the rules?
What I understand is Mr. Fenner, who owns this property, does not want to grant an additional 36-foot wide easement, other than if he were to be compensated for that, and I'll let the applicants speak to that.
So, is there an easement, I'm sorry, is there an easement in place right now?
Yes, the 30-foot wide easement.
And that was granted?
In 2007.
By?
By Mr. Fenner, who owns this property right here.
So, I guess I still am confused on this, I did talk to someone in your office yesterday, I, I don't understand why we're making this change now when the easement is already in existence, I don't understand the purpose.
Well, our current ordinance requires that if, in order us to recognize the easement for purposes of issuing a building permit, because these two lots are currently vacant.
So we are going to be issuing a building permit on this?
That's what they would like, yes. That's what they would like, yes.
Because we didn't have that in any of our information, so.
Oh, I did write that in order for the planning director to recognize the access easement for purposes of issuing a building permit, it has to meet that sixty-six foot wide requirement.
And see, I under, I just understood, we didn't know it was imminent. I, I was trying to figure out, just, I mean, that was a general statement to me. I'm sorry, I did not understand that, and, and certainly didn't get that yesterday when I called, so.
So right now, these people could not get a building permit unless they either get this variance to allow or to require or basically tell me to recognize it for purposes of issuing a building permit.
What's their other option?
Get additional thirty-six feet of easement from Mr. Fenner.
And if Mr. Fenner puts his feet in the ground and says, no, I'm not going to do that, then they're, they, they've just got a piece of ground they can't do anything with.
Correct.
And, and when did they buy that ground?
I'm not exactly sure when they bought it.
It was two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight.
Did you buy it from Mr. Fenner?
No.
These lots down here, there's a number of ten acre lots, all zoned suburban residential district. They are created a long time ago, prior to our ordinance, and prior to being within a three-mile plating jurisdiction.
And it does look like there's any access to any of those?
Yeah.
There's, some of these lots have access off of Big Horn Road. There was an easement that went to here, actually to about right here, but did not provide access to these lots as far as I know. So right now, this is the only access to these two lots.
And basically, it's their drive, it'll be their driveway.
Correct.
But if they, if they, if they want to build on each one of those lots, then we're going to make him put sixty-six foot easement going down through there.
From here to here, well, we actually require it from here to here and then all the way to this lot if they wanted. But you know, that Mr. Newman currently owns these two lots, so he can create a sixty-six foot wide easement from here to here.
Which isn't going to make any sense at all if we give him a thirty-foot from there on.
Plus, when the city, Rapid City is involved.
Does he understand that if he wants to build on that south lot, we may make him go from thirty to sixty-six feet?
Yes.
If he sells them.
If he sells them. If he sells them.
Mr. Chair?
I'll come in.
Yes.
No, no, but variant.
When was this easement created?
Two thousand and seven.
So how did that get by?
Easements don't, are not required to come through our office. They can file an easement and just record it with registered deeds.
Okay, so it was, it was just a miscellaneous document filed at the registered deeds?
Correct.
Okay, so it had nothing to do with replating or anything like that?
No.
Okay. You got me. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve variance fourteen dash zero five as requested by the applicant and presented by staff.
With one condition?
Do we have a second?
With, with one condition.
No, we did not have it.
Oh, I thought you.
I thought you did there.
Previous.
Okay.
So Dan, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, wait. Mr. Chair? Dan, now when people want to plot a property like that and create all these little lots, do we make them show where the road access is going to be to get into those lots?
Absolutely.
But in two thousand and seven, we weren't doing that.
Well, no, these properties were created way prior to that.
Okay.
These properties, I believe, I think go back as far as probably the sixties or seventies.
And there wasn't any requirement to show how you were going to get access?
And even in Pennington County, outside of the three mile, they can create lots by what we call eloquent portions, going down to the south half, the south half, the south half, all the way down to two and a half acres. Doesn't mean we're going to recognize it for purposes of issuing a building permit, but they can legally file a deed on that type of legal description with registered deeds and not going through our office.
And, and not showing access to it?
Correct.
So anybody, frankly, anybody that buys one of these lots that doesn't have a designated access to it is, is buying it thinking, I'm going to fly in and out of there. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair, just for clarity, there was, there was no recommendation by staff for any conditions on this item. I read it wrong.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Make a motion, we come out of the Board of Adjustment.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn it as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion failed.
Aye.
Motion carrying.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. A minor plat in fourteen oh one and subdivision regulation variance fourteen oh one for Sean and Jody Burke. An approval is recommended. Item E is a minor plat fourteen oh two for Lariat Log Cabin and Doug and Carol Willoughby. An approval is recommended.
Does anyone wish to remove any items from the planning and zoning consent agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda for planning and zoning that's presented by the planning director.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item F.
Good morning, Brittany Molliter, Water Protection Coordinator. Item F is the Pennington County Annual MS Four Stormwater Report. Pennington County is required by the Environmental Protection Agency's Stormwater Phase Two Rule to submit an MS Four, which stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, annual stormwater management report to the state of South Dakota. The Stormwater Phase Two Rule applies to those areas within the county that are considered urbanized. There are three areas within the county that meet that criteria. Rapid Valley, which includes Green Valley, Universal Drive, and an area in Colonial Pine Hills. These areas are outlined in Appendix A of the Pennington County Stormwater Management Plan. Pennington County Stormwater Management Plan was developed in two thousand and three and provides the goals the county defined at that time. The MS Four Annual Report is a report on the implementation and progress of the plan. The county updated their stormwater management plan to reflect current goals for two thousand and fourteen. The MS Four Annual Report requires the board's approval prior to submission to the state of South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. So enclosed is the MS Four Annual Report. I do have a couple of amendments. I gave you a memo on a few amendments that I'm requesting in the report. Do you just want me to start, go down the line? Okay, on page five, it's the fifth paragraph down. I'd like to omit that paragraph because it's redundant to the paragraph below. It says the same thing about the annual cleanup day in two thousand and thirteen. And then on page six, under public involvement and participation, I want to add a paragraph at the end of the page indicating that a citizen representative is appointed by the Board of Commissioners to the air quality board. The air quality board is responsible to ensure compliance with the National Ambient Air Quality Standards in accordance with Pennington County Ordinance Number Twelve, and this includes construction activities within the air quality control zone. And then the next one is on page seven, under illicit discharge, detection, and elimination. I want to add a paragraph under the goals that were not completed in two thousand and thirteen, the third paragraph where it says, a program that allows citizens to dispose of hazardous, household hazardous waste were not, was not developed. In some preliminary assessment of the program, it was going to be quite costly. Currently, the Rapid Cities landfill does not accept hazardous waste. This type of program would need more explanation and cooperation from surrounding entities. And I want to add, however, Pennington County does have a hazardous materials emergency planning committee through the emergency management department, and cooperative efforts with this committee to develop a household hazardous waste disposal program will be explored. And then on page eight, at the top of the page, in the last paragraph, where it says the city of Rapid City in two thousand and thirteen, I want to add program. So it's the city of Rapid City's program. And then on page nine, under the construction site stormwater runoff control, under the section lists all best management practices that have already been implemented for construction site stormwater runoff control, I want to add the paragraph, Pennington County Ordinance Number Twelve applies to construction permits within the air quality control zone. The ordinance requires erosion and sediment control to stabilize soils and prevent dust emissions. In addition to erosion and sediment controls, reclamation of disturbed areas is required. In the air quality control zone, both a construction permit and an air quality permit may be required. So I would just ask that the MS Four Annual Report be approved with the suggested amendments and submitted to DENR with the chair's signature.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the MS Four Annual Report with the revisions and authorize your signature.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
The next, oops, excuse me. The next item is the stormwater management plan. Pennington County Stormwater Management Plan was developed in two thousand and three and provides the goals that the county defined at the time. I updated the stormwater management plan to reflect the goals for two thousand and fourteen. So I would just like the board to accept the new plan with the changes and updated goals. And I have in the sidebars shown the changes that I had made to the current plan.
This is very minor, but on page fourteen, in your highlighted area.
Okay.
The, I have, is circled.
Oh, that should be struck from there. So it should read the county develop a plan.
That should be struck also.
Okay. Yes. So I will correct that in the current plan. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the updated stormwater management plan that's presented.
With, is, is struck on page fourteen?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Item H.
Item H is the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan Advisory Group Recommendations. These were continued from the November fifth, two thousand and thirteen Board of Commissioners meeting. On September eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan Advisory Group made three recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners. The recommendations were presented to the Board of Commissioners on September twentieth. The recommendations included that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners approves two riparian applications, SPC two zero one three PC nine eight A and SPC two zero one three PC one zero five, and two onsite wastewater treatment applications, SPC two zero one three PC nine eight B and SPC two zero one three PC one oh one B, and allows the applications that are not funded to remain pending and to be considered for the next round of applications. And staff is recommending that SPC two zero one three PC nine eight A be funded at eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and not eighty-eight hundred dollars because the topographic land survey indicated channel degradation was worse than originally anticipated. In addition, SPC two zero one three PC nine eight B and SPC two zero one three PC one zero one B were continued until further information could be collected at the October first, two thousand and thirteen Board of Commissioners meeting. This item was continued until today on the November fifth meeting. So an update, the applicant for the onsite wastewater treatment system application, SPC two zero one three PC one oh one B, would not like to pursue funding at this time. So I'm not asking for approval for that one. And then, in addition, staff needs to continue working with the applicant for SPC two zero one three PC nine eight B regarding the type of system that is needed at that site. So that's the other onsite wastewater application. The other two riparian applications are still the same. So if there's questions on that one, I do have the engineer here, Mr. Pete Roush from Respec, to answer any questions you have regarding those projects. In addition, there is a budget sheet in here that shows if you do approve those pending applications, where we are with the budget and where we are with our goals as far as our Spring Creek plan. And then the other two recommendations that the advisory group made, you guys approved at the October first Board of Commissioner meeting. So the motion I'm requesting is to approve the two riparian applications, SPC two zero one three PC nine eight A for eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and SPC two zero one three PC one zero five for nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars, and allows the applications that are not funded to remain pending and to be considered for the next round of applications.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions or comments?
Good morning, my name is George Farabee, and back in November, the issue was raised about what does this have to do, these two riparian projects have to do with fecal coliform reduction?
Would you speak to the motion, please?
I believe I am, sir. These items were continued from November. The question was raised in November. What do these have to do with the TMDL objective of reducing fecal coliform? These two projects are nothing more than landscaping projects. I don't think we ought to be wasting taxpayer money improving people's property values. That's all we're doing. Turning this on this morning, the president's recommending a four trillion, four trillion dollar budget, and certainly a trillion, at least a trillion of that is to be borrowed money. Let's quit this nonsense. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi, Catherine Barnard from Rapid City. And I've been following this, and it makes me wonder, maybe you can help me, if we have septic ordinances in place and landowners know about these and they're expected to keep up their own septic and sewer, why don't we make them do that? Obviously, taxpayers don't object to paying if people need help. If there's a means test and they can apply for taxpayer money that way, I don't object to that. But I do have an objection when the taxpayers are going to pay for these projects when we could just send an inspector out there and that would be a lot cheaper and they could follow, they could clean up their own septic or sewerage.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, just a comment, we aren't dealing with septic systems in this motion. We're dealing with a riparian project.
Dan Richard. I just, back in November, a question was asked. While these riparian projects were brought up by Commissioner Holloway, would like to see the layout of the creek and where these projects have been completed. And I've been to most of these meetings and I haven't seen it. And I don't know if Commissioner Holloway has gotten that layout and.
Has presented.
Not given. No, not that.
We have pictures last night.
Any other comments? Not, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item. Item. I.
Item I is the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan, participant agreements. Participants agree, participant agreements are needed in order for the projects to begin. A participant agreement is, um, sorry. So my requested motion was to approve the Chairperson's signature on Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan Cost Share Participant Agreements, SPC 2013 PC 98A for $11,250 and SPC 2013 PC 105 for $19,900.
That would be my motion, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second?
Well, I'll, I'll second it.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Just since we've approved the projects, the only thing left to do is to make them sign the agreements, I guess.
If I might, I'd like to ask the, really, really horrible question. Is this Board, is DNR, is the government EPA ever considered who the overseer of these projects are? Who's, who's going to do oversight?
The motion, please. The motion.
There's two individuals, you're going to sign an agreement, sir, with two participants. Who's going to oversee them? Who's going to oversee the project?
I'm going to shut you down because you are not speaking to the motion. The motion. That's enough.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item J.
Item J is just an informational piece. Basically, on February 24th, 2014, Planning Commission moved to have the planning staff research and review options for vacation home rentals in suburban residential district. What happened is it came to staff's attention that in V, in suburban residential districts, VHRs will eventually become all revoked. There will be no more upon sale or transfer. So now, we don't believe that was the intent of the ordinance. So we'd like to have, you know, the Planning Commission has recommended that we move forward with looking at this and possibly making recommendations and bringing it back to the Planning Commission and to review the whole VHR ordinance in regards to even allowing vacation home rentals in suburban residential district. So this is just informational for the Commissioners only.
Thank you. That was, for your information, it was my intent. To do away with them in suburban residential areas, yes.
It was my intent also.
Not to allow them in suburban residential?
That we, now you're, you're putting words in my mouth, Dan. Because they already have permissions, but when they go to sell the property, it went away.
Right.
And that way, we didn't have one vacation rental right on top of another one in low-density residential, suburban residential housing.
So upon sale or transfer, it would be revoked and not be able to be transferred to the next property owner.
That's what we decided back then.
But your question is what?
Oh, just to be able to move ahead with reviewing the whole ordinance and see if it's still relevant, see if there's changes that are needed in regards to maybe even possibly allowing them in suburban residential district.
But I guess frankly, if the majority of the Board says, "No", we, we, the intent was always to not have them in suburban residential once the properties were sold, then, you know.
Just be a mute.
Yeah, it would be a mute point.
Right.
So if the majority of the Board feels that way, I mean, I was at the Planning Commission meeting representing the County Commission when they brought this up and discussed it, and I, I suggested to Dan that he bring it to the Board so that the Board knows what's going on, because I wasn't sure what the actual intent was. And I know that there were some mixed feelings on the Planning Commission, but ultimately it's the County Commission's decision. So I guess if there's three people up here that say, "Yeah, once they sell their property, it's a, it's a done deal and eventually we won't have any in suburban residential", then it's, then the ordinance is right the way we wanted it.
Correct.
I, I may not be up to speed on this, but does, is the ordinance silent on that issue now?
No, the way the ordinance is currently written, that upon sale or transfer of these properties in suburban residential district, the V H, the vacation home rentals cannot be transferred to the new property owner. It goes away. There will be no vacation home rental in suburban residential.
That's the way the ordinance is written now.
Currently, yes.
And the only way that they're in, the only way they're in the suburban residential districts now is that we, the ordinance says, "You can stay there, Grandfather Dan, under a, what is it? We give them a conditional use permit, but they had to have their, in place by the time the ordinance went into effect."
Correct.
And, and so it was just a one-time shot.
Right.
And we actually did have those hearings of those folks, right? We had folks come and.
Well, yeah, we had numerous hearings in regards to vacation home rentals.
My, my take on this is this, that we have an ordinance. We have a procedure for amending ordinances that includes action by citizens who wish a change. The process is there. If someone is, has a desire to change the ordinance and wishes to pursue it, they have that option. And for us to debate whether or not we want to be faced with that debate is a moot point, in my opinion.
Well, also, when the ordinance was originally passed, the intent was to look at it after a year's time to see if everything was still relevant or to see if there's any complaints regarding it, to see if there was maybe a need change, need, a change.
I needed.
Needed, to see if we would want to make any changes after one year's or a time period, just to look at it again to see if there's any changes. If you feel there isn't any need for change, we don't need to do it.
But, and there hasn't been a citizen come forward and request this change?
We had one person who wanted to buy a vacation home rental in SRD that was currently under the current ordinance. When we found out about this, after reading through it, it's like, "Well, we can't transfer that. The, the conditional use permit will go away and you won't be able to have a vacation home rental."
Right. But, but no citizen has come forward and said, "I would like to have an amendment to this ordinance."
No, nobody has.
Have there been any other issues, Dan?
Other than we haven't really had any complaints, any issues regarding vacation home rentals? No, we have not had any complaints or any other issues in regards to our current ordinance. Other than, I don't know if you remember that one conditional use permit where the upon sale or transfer became a kind of monotonous issue because we had, the current, or the current property owner has to get the conditional use permit. And they, they wanted to buy the property with a guarantee that they could do a vacation home rental. So it was contingent upon them getting a conditional use permit. But upon sale or transfer, it went away. So they had to get a CUP for the VHR. They sold it, CUP was gone, so the new owner had to come in and reapply for that same conditional use permit. That's really the only thing that's come up.
But did, was that granted?
Yes, it was.
In a suburban residential area?
No, it wasn't suburban, it was a general ag.
Okay, all right.
Okay, you have your.
I don't think there's.
It sounds like there's no need to review the current ordinance.
Unless a citizen makes the application process.
There's a way to do it.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
But the direction is, any, that they go away eventually. I mean, that's.
Yes, that's, that's the way the ordinance is currently written.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is items for the Chair, and I would share with you that I had the good fortune of kind of accidentally being invited to a meeting with the two representatives from the railroad company GNW that are in the process of purchasing Canadian Pacific interests. David A. Brown from Jacksonville, Florida, who is the Chief Operating Officer, and Jay Brad Ovitt from Draper, Utah, Senior Regional Vice President, Mountain West Regional Railroads. Had a meeting yesterday with Kasai Alhaj, Mayor Quaker, Ben Snow, and these gentlemen. And the whole transaction is awaiting approval by the Surface Transportation Board. They had some pretty exciting information. The main thing at this point that I would share without compromising anything is that they are offing in Founder's Park in the same building as Dakota Mill and Grain. And they will have a, an executive here and in here in South Dakota. And I suggested to them at some point when they got, when and if everything came into being, that their new manager touched base with the County Commission. That's all I have. Committee reports?
Mr. Chair, I just have one that's tentatively set up for our next County Commission meeting. And I had the invite to the, up at Everett Air Force Base here a while back. And they put on a DVD that they had put together for the Powder River MOA bombing range and the attempt to increase the size of that. And I thought that that was so informative at that time that I saw that one at the base that I asked Holliday to see if we couldn't put it on the agenda for next meeting to have that individual come in and present us with that, with that DVD. It's very informative and I think my, I think we should go ahead and have it on our agenda and also make a press release that we are going to have that in case anybody wants to come in and view it. Takes about, oh, 12, 13 minutes in that neighborhood. And if we have a question and answer, it'd take a little longer than that. But it's very informative, tells you exactly what they intend to do. And it did away with a lot of fears that I had about what might happen in the agricultural year, area. So that's coming up next meeting.
Thank you. I, I really don't have anything, Mr. Chairman. I see our texting, a texting bill is, two texting bills are working their way through the legislature and they have amended the Senate one now where that's as worthless as the House one, so I don't know.
Mr. Holloway?
Yes, I, we had a Juvenile Services Center Board Meeting on February 21st and the JDAI program seems to be working because the numbers, the population at the detention center is down considerably. I think during our, at our meeting, it was down to about 20 kids in there, which is considerably lower than it has been in years past as an average daily population. That's, as I've told you before, that's a good thing and a bad thing. The good thing is, we don't have these kids in. The downside of it is, your cost of daily operation per detainee goes up. And I know the sheriff and his staff are working to try to figure out how they're going to continue to cut some of those expenses out there. But you can only cut them so far. So that was the only, the only committee meeting that I had since our last meeting. I would have a question for you, Mr. Chair, on, I got a copy of a letter from the city that they're expanding that TIF. It looks like they went out east of town.
Over on Minnesota?
Yeah. That, that's, they've, they've added more, they've added more property in that TIF.
That, there's been no formal meetings that we, Mr. Busker and I have been invited to.
Imagine that.
Whatever is taking place is.
I got that too. I, evidently they're, they've already passed it, so.
It was another one of those deals where we've got a lot of input.
Right.
Although they're using our tax dollars, the tax dollars from the county. All right, thank you. I'll throw it away.
Just to let the rest of the Commissioners know, Donna and I have continued to be, well, involved with the community health, health and humans, Pennington County Health and Human Services Building Project where it looks like the funding is going to be in place for them. Where there are several design meetings going on right now. It's kind of at the point where they're trying to finalize that design and then finalize funding. So within a short time, we should be bringing some kind of presentation to you. The other thing I wanted to talk about, HB 1097, that was tabled with the agreement of, of the people that were supporting it. The reason that it was decided to do that is that there became an agreement where we would be able to go to the egg taxation committee and review this. There arose a concern that by making these changes, we would be jeopardizing education funding. And we did not see that coming. So certainly, we don't want to do that. And so going to this egg taxation committee will help us research that. Also, the Department of Revenue has, is backing us going through this process to make sure that that does not happen, that it doesn't jeopardize that. So we'll be working on that starting June to, actually, we're starting in April. We've already been planning on what kind of information we need to come up with and what kind of people, what people we need to visit with to find out just what it is their concerns are. And, and we'll go forward with it. We'll see where that goes.
Very good. Anything else? If not, the next item is items from the public. Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission?
Last meeting, the question was asked, and I'll ask it again with your permission. If the feds cut off the funds, state cut off the funds for Spring Creek.
If the feds cut off the funds, state cut off the funds for Spring Creek, will you five folks over this board look the Pennington County taxpayers in the eye and take money out of their pocket for Spring Creek? The response, and the question remains, the chair responded to the question, not directly, but indirectly, and I'll paraphrase, my understanding of what was said, that when the folks require something to be done, they get together and do it. No, that's not exactly what was said, but we're close. Well, lo and behold, there's a project in the eastern part of the state that goes into Minnesota and Iowa, and I sure wish that these folks would follow the advice that the chair, or the wisdom that the chair shared with us last meeting. Lewis and Clark Water Project, they're short $207 million, and they want the feds, they're wanting the feds to provide water to southeastern South Dakota, northeastern Iowa, northwestern Iowa, excuse me, and parts of Minnesota. They say all the members have prepaid their share of the funding, 10% from each of the states and 10% from each of the county communities. That leaves the, we, that leaves we picking up 80% of the tab. I didn't ask anybody to put my water in. I'm sure Dan didn't. I'm sure your folks didn't. Communities desperate for a new source of water. By all means, I wish they would have heard what we heard from the chair last meeting. What right do these folks have sticking their hands in our pocket for 80% of their water? It's unreal. Just happened to be coincidental with, with what the chairman had to say. What happened last meeting? Debate was cut off. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that, that you folks can't look me in the eye and tell me that my service to the country, my nights 50 feet underground in North Dakota as a missileer. And during my time as a missileer, we didn't have anything seen in the paper about the nuclear officers cheating, failing tests, using drugs. And I was one of them for five years. I'm hoping you can't look me in the eye and tell me my years on the flight line below Zero at Minot or KI Sawyer. KI Sawyer, I heard, just happened to hear on the way to this meeting this morning, KI Sawyer had 75 days, consecutive days, below freezing. That's where, out of maintenance school, that's where I went. I'm hoping you folks can't look me in the eye. Oh, and that fellow, said the airplane right there took off in a blinding snowstorm to go to Libya. Can't tell you the first two years of the brown bar at KI Sawyer, how many times the maintenance truck I led, the B-52s. We were fighting the Cold War in those days, leaving B-52s to the end of the runway until takeoff time before the senior controller at SAC headquarters canceled the flight. That's what we went through, and I'm hoping you folks aren't telling me that my service was of no value. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the commission?
I don't know.
Anyone else? If not, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried.